This is the Wednesday, June 29th, 2022 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good afternoon. Please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty. Maps.
Here.
Rubio. Wheeler.
Here. And we'll now hear from legal counsel and the rules of order and decorum. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. City Council is holding hybrid public meetings with limited in-person attendance in addition to electronic attendance. If you wish to testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance by visiting the council agenda on the council clerk's webpage at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. You may sign up for communications to speak briefly about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions, reports, or first readings of ordinances. In-person testimony may occur from one of several locations, including city council chambers and the Lovejoy Room in City Hall and the Portland Building. Written testimony may be submitted at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during the city council meeting so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. That's all.
Very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Colleagues, before we get to the auditor's report on the charter commission process, there's one official order of business that I hinted at this morning that we need to do first, and that is to elect a new council president. And effective July 1st, that is Commissioner Maps' turn to be council president. As a reminder, this is a position that rotates every six months amongst council members, excluding the mayor, of course. Commissioner Rubio has done a really terrific job, and I appreciate her leadership and her willingness to step in, and I just want to thank you, Carmen, so much for that. You've done a great job. Commissioner Maps is next in line, of course, to serve as council president. While we are voting on this today, I want you to know that the new rotation will, of course, start July 1st officially, and it will run through December 31st, 2022. So colleagues, with that, I'd like to make a motion to elect Commissioner Maps as our next council president. Could I please get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, I'll go ahead and let you take the second there. Is there any further discussion on this side? Saying none, please call the roll, Kealan.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, and, you know, my fellow colleagues, we all started around the same time, so I got it way too soon. And Commissioner Rubio did an amazing job the last six months, and I'm grateful that I get to serve with you, Commissioner Maps. I vote aye.
Maps.
I just want to thank Commissioner Rubio for doing such a great job of serving as council president. She definitely leaves some hard shoes or big, large shoes to fill. I'm honored to take on this responsibility, and I'm happy to serve. I vote aye.
Rubio.
I just want to thank all my colleagues for the tremendous amount of patience during my learning and some of my mistakes. So thank you. Thank you for your patience. And I just want to say to Commissioner Maps, you're going to be fantastic at this. And thanks for giving me confidence in pep talks when I've had to take the floor. It's been great sitting next to you on the dais. So congratulations. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, I'm five and a half years into being the presiding officer, and I make mistakes each and every day. And so by that standard, Commissioner Rubio, I think you've done an outstanding job. Commissioner Maps, I appreciate your being our next council president. Of course, I'll work with you to help you and support you or answer any questions I possibly can on that front, but I know you'll do a brilliant job. Thank you for your service. I vote aye, and the appointment is made. And just a reminder, Commissioner Rubio, you're still in the hot seat basically for the rest of the week. But when we reconvene next week, it'll be Commissioner Maps in the council president seat. Thank you, colleagues, for that. With that, Kealan, could you please read our one item for this afternoon? It's item number 602.
City Auditor Report to Council on the Charter Commission's Proposed Measure to Voters.
Colleagues, this is, of course, the auditor's report to the city council, and as such, the auditor was certainly offered the opportunity to present her report to the council. She has declined, so I'll introduce the report on her behalf. The Portland City Charter requires that at least once every 10 years, city council appoints a 20-member charter commission to review and recommend changes to the city charter. The city council appointed the current charter commission in December of 2020, as required by the current city charter. Over the last year and a half, the charter commission has reviewed the current charter and developed a proposal with amendments. Today, Julia Meyer, who is a project manager within the Office of Management and Finance, who has facilitated the commission's work, will overview the charter review process. Then we'll hear from the current charter commission co-chairs, Melanie Billings-Yun and Gloria Cruz, who will present the commission's proposal. As a reminder, the Charter Review Commission is an independent body. They proposed a measure which was supported by over 15 members of their charter commission. Under both the city charter and city code, this means that the proposed measure will go directly to a vote. It'll go directly to the public for a vote this fall without any intervention from the Portland City Council. The report that we hear today will be treated as a report, quote, "of an informative nature which requests no council action," unquote, under PCC 3.02.040.1.6. In other words, council will simply hear the presentation as informational, and no vote will be taken. And with that, I'll turn it over to Julia Meyer. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and commissioners. It's good to be with you again. My name is Julia Meyer. I use she/her pronouns, and I serve as project manager for Charter Review. I think this may be only the fourth charter commission in the last 100 years in the city of Portland. And it's only the second since Portlanders overwhelmingly supported a ballot measure to require periodic charter review by an independent charter commission. I want to begin by thanking council for sharing your perspectives with the charter commission, investing in charter review through the budgeting process, and supporting the independence of the commission to do its work. As the mayor mentioned, over the past 18 months, the charter commission has conducted research and engaged community to develop and refine a proposal to deliver the change to Portlanders that they're calling for. On June 14th, the charter commission reached a significant milestone, voting to advance a ballot measure to voters at the November 2022 election. Based on the city charter, if 15 or more charter commissioners agree to a recommended change, then that change goes directly to the ballot for Portlanders to vote on. Our amendments were supported by an affirmative vote of 17 charter commissioners, so in excess of the 15 or more required for direct submitted to the ballot. I will just note, attached to the auditor's report is both an entire redline version of the charter, which shows all the recommended changes, as well as the charter commission's progress report. It just gives greater detail about the charter commission's analysis and community engagement to date. So we have with us a handful probably of charter commissioners who are available to answer any questions that you may have. And we're just going to start by having our two co-chairs give you an overview of the commission's proposal to change city government. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Gloria Cruz to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Julia. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Gloria Cruz. I use they/them pronouns, and I serve as a co-chair for the charter commission. We have a brief 15-minute presentation about the commission's proposal to change city government and what comes next. So before we get started, I too want to thank you all for meeting with the charter commission and sharing your experiences with our current structure of government, your priorities for charter reform, and your questions and reactions to our draft charter amendments. So we all know and understand the important work of charter reform requires engaging with Portlanders across neighborhoods, lived experiences, and backgrounds. The charter commission committed to a community-driven process to inform its decision-making and having an equitable, accessible, and transparent community engagement process. We've partnered with almost 20 community-based organizations to support the design and implementation of community education and engagement activities to meaningful engage in Portland's diverse communities. On the screen, you'll see a snapshot of some of the engagement to date. We have hosted 26 community listening sessions with almost 600 attendees. We've received 1,600 public comments, including 15 hours of verbal public comment. And we've held 120 briefings and presentations on charter review. Last month, we met with all of you, and we held two city employee town halls with more than 1,100 city employees in attendance. On June 14th, the charter commission voted with a supermajority to advance a ballot measure to change Portland city government in November 2022's ballot. The interconnected policies will strengthen our local government and democracy. The proposal changes city government in the following ways: allowing voters to rank candidates in order of their preference using ranked choice voting; four new geographic districts with three members elected to represent each district; expanding the city council to a total of 12 members; and a city council that focuses on setting policy, and a mayor elected citywide to run the city's day-to-day operations with the help of a professional city administrator. I will now turn it over to my co-chair, Commissioners Billings-Yun, to describe the proposal.
Apologies for that. Thank you very much, Gloria, and thank you, commissioners, for listening to our proposal. Let's start. I'm going to start with the last of the parts that Commissioner Cruz mentioned. Under our proposal, members of city council will no longer directly manage city bureaus. City council will focus on making policy and engaging in serving Portlanders. The mayor, elected citywide, will run the city's day-to-day operations with the help of a professional city administrator. This structure of government is called mayor council, form of government. In the mayor council form of government, the roles of city leaders are clearly defined, so Portlanders know who to hold accountable. It ensures our elected leaders are accessible to and have time to build meaningful relationships within the community, and that those relationships and connections can better inform city councilors as they develop policy. This structure has a separation of powers lacking in our current system. City council will make the laws, and the mayor will carry out those laws. If the proposal is adopted by voters, the mayor would no longer serve on or regularly vote with the city council, except in having a tie-breaking vote. One city councillor, chosen by their peers, will serve as council president and preside at council meetings, as you do now. Seven affirmative votes would be required to pass non-emergency ordinances. Charter commission has also added a provision to the charter on budgeting, a topic that's not mentioned in the current city charter. A mayor will be responsible for proposing a budget no later than May 5th of each year, and the city council will then function as the budget committee and is responsible for approving that budget. City resources can only be spent in conformance with a budget approved by council. In this mayor council structure, the mayor will be able to provide political leadership to quickly address urgent local issues, and since the mayor is elected citywide, would be accountable to voters. Charter commission's proposal ensures that there are checks and balances on our elected officials to create a more transparent and accountable government. Now let's turn to the mayor council forum here. While the mayor will have executive authority over city businesses, some critical responsibilities will be delegated to a professional city administrator. Portland residents rely on efficient and effective delivery of services, and we need a form of government in which professional city administrator can effectively manage the city's bureaus. The administrator will oversee city services, such as road maintenance, fire safety, and water services, and will be nominated by the mayor, subject to approval by a majority of the city council. The mayor will provide day-to-day supervision of the city administrator. The city administrator will be in charge, with a couple of exceptions, of hiring, firing, and supervising bureau directors, better insulating bureaus from political jockeying, and improving service delivery. The exceptions that I mentioned are that we have carved out exceptions for the city attorney and chief of police. Those positions will be nominated by the mayor, subject to approval by city council. The mayor may also remove the city attorney and the chief of police. Second major proposal is to replace our current at-large system with four new geographic districts, each represented by three city councilors or an expanded 12-member council. Councillor elected from a district must have resided in and been a registered voter in that district for at least a year before the election. The three councilors elected in each new district will run in the same race at the same time. The mayor and auditor will be elected citywide. Electing multiple councillors per district addresses the fact that it's incredibly difficult for any one individual to represent the diversity of viewpoints, experiences, and problems facing geographic district. Multi-member districts provide better representation of all Portlanders and their concerns. Districts will also help elected leaders build strong relationships with the communities they represent, and more deeply understand local community issues, especially as councillors' primary offices will be in their districts. Districts also reduce the significant financial barrier to running for office citywide, which tilts the election toward wealthier candidates or those supported by large financial backers. Cost of campaigning will be less because candidates can focus on a smaller geographic area. Finally, we want to address the community questions about the salaries of the new district-based expanded city council. The city charter is currently silent about their salaries, leaving city commissioners to set their own salaries when they vote on the budget. In order to avoid any conflicts of interest, the charter commission proposes an independent salary commission similar to those used in other jurisdictions to set the salaries for elected officials. The five-member salary commission will be composed of qualified human resource professionals with compensation experience and cannot be City of Portland employees, elected workers, or candidates. Salaries will be set every two years. Portlanders frequently ask us about the district boundaries. The charter commission will not propose a district map. Rather, the districting process will be undertaken by another independent community body with the time and resources necessary to robustly engage Portlanders. In August through November, we expect the districting process to begin immediately. A 13-member, geographically diverse, and independent district commission seated by January 31, 2023 will be responsible for preparing and adopting the district map. The district commission will be required to hold a citywide public hearing early in its process to engage Portlanders in district criteria, and then hold at least two public hearings in each proposed district before it votes to adopt the district plan. Not with, but exceeding state and federal law, the district commission is required to ensure that each district, as nearly as possible, is compact, meaning no hearing-mandering, contiguous, meaning one single piece, utilizes existing geographic or political boundaries, keeps meeting of common interests together, is connected by transportation links, and is importantly of equal population. Of course, the district commission may also consider additional criteria. The final leg or component of this integrated package is electing our city leaders using ranked choice voting, allowing voters to rank candidates in order of their preference. In the example you see here, candidates are being ranked first choice, second choice, third choice, and so on, for as many or as few as you care to offer preference. You can simply just choose one candidate, like in the current system. Using ranked choice voting, if your first choice doesn't win, you have other candidates that your vote could count towards. So if your first choice is eliminated, your vote could count for your next choice candidate. This reduces the number of wasted votes, since voters can see their votes counted for another candidate that represents their values or interests. This was just proven that voters using ranked choice voting feel like they have more choices, more use of their vote, and are more satisfied with the overall outcome. Now I know that this may feel unusual to Portlanders, but as of November of last year, 43 jurisdictions across the US used ranked choice voting, including Benton County, Oregon, and New York City, and I would add, 55 jurisdictions will use it in their next election. So it is a building form of voting. In the multi-winner elections for city councilors, the commissioner proposes proportional ranked choice voting, which has been used by Cambridge, Massachusetts since 1941, by Australia for more than a century, in fact, by 85 countries around the world, including 40 of the 43 countries in Europe. A core benefit of ranked choice voting is that it allows for decisions in one election, eliminating the need for May primaries to city elections. Eliminating primaries ensures that more Portlanders can elect their city council during one election with much higher voter turnout. In average, over the past year, 50 years, only a little over a third of Portland's registered voters have voted in the primary. We will continue to elect city leaders every two years. Here, all councilors in two districts will be elected in a presidential year, and the auditor and all councilors in the other two districts will be elected in midterm elections coinciding with the Oregon governor's race. One final note, hot off the presses. I should add that last night, the Monoma County Charter Review Committee voted to refer ranked choice voting to the November ballot, so Portland voters will now have two opportunities to choose if they want to adopt this system. I will now gladly turn it back to Commissioner Cruz to outline what happens next.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings-Yun. So if voters approve the measure in November, the process to implement the will of the voters will begin immediately. The independent district commission will be seated by January 31, 2023, and the district map will be adopted by September 2023. District-based elections using ranked choice voting will be in place by November 2024 elections, and mayor and new city council will enter office on January 1, 2025, into the new form of government roles and responsibilities. The city will need to develop a detailed transition plan and allocate funds to implement the reforms. The city budget office estimates provided an estimate of the fiscal impact of the proposal to change city government. One-time cost estimates of the transition are approximately $4 million to $5.9 million per year, or between 0.6 and 1% of the fiscal 2022-2023 discretionary resources during the three-year transition period from 2022 to 2025. Annual ongoing costs, which begin in 2025 after one-time cost, and are estimated between $900,000 and $8.7 million annually, or between 0.1% and 1.4% of the city's general funds discretion, excuse me, the general fund. excuse me, the general fund discretionary resources. The city has $617 million in general fund discretionary resources, which are funds that can be allocated with few restrictions. Discretionary funds are approximately 10% of the overall city budget. The budget office estimates don't consider any potential cost savings of the reform package that may be achieved through the consolidation of bureau functions and streamlining the city's organizational structure and delivery of services. The Charter Commission recognizes that many of Portlanders think the city is on the wrong track and that big changes, including structure of city government, are needed to ensure our government is more accountable, more transparent, and more efficient and effective, more responsive and representative of every area of our city. Thank you. The city attorney's office is responsible for preparing the ballot measure title and explanatory statement. Upon completion of the resolution of the ballot title challenge process, the city elections officer files a notice of measure with the county elections officer. Portlanders will vote on the proposal on November 8, 2022. The Charter Commission will reconvene tomorrow night to begin our conversations around Phase Two. Some potential Phase Two topics include climate and environmental justice, campaign finance reform and governance, infusing equity and core values into the charter, expanding voter rights, bureau-proposed charter amendments, and participatory budgeting. As a reminder, Charter Commission's terms end on December 3, 2022, so any agreed to recommendations from Phase Two will be referred to a 2023 ballot for Portlanders to consider. And then finally, I want to thank you all again for the opportunity to share the Charter Commission's proposal with you. Then it looks like handing it back.
And just to be clear, are you handing it back to me?
I'm looking. I think I am, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, very good. Colleagues, any questions or comments at this time? All right, I have a couple of comments. First of all, as a reminder, council has heard this item as an informational presentation. We won't be taking a vote on it. Thank you to the Office of Management and Finance and City Attorney team. I want to thank Julia, Sophia, Diana, Shashana, and Maya for your hard work on facilitating the charter review process. I also want to thank the Charter Commission co-chairs Melanie Billings Young and Gloria Cruz for joining us today to share this report. I want to express my deep appreciation for all of the time and the work that the entire Charter Commission has put into this process. I do have a couple of questions, and they're fairly general in nature. I noticed as I was reading through some of the reports, and obviously, we heard a presentation earlier about this process and what you believed you heard from the public. I noticed that a number of cities that I would consider very, very successful cities, Denver, Boston, Atlanta, and others, use a strong mayor form of government. And it's my understanding that was not considered. Can somebody just give me some indication of why that was the case? I assume you heard from the public that was not their interest, but I'm just curious in your words why that particular model was not considered for the city of Portland.
I can start, and then maybe if one of our other commissioners wants to add anything. We were mindful of a couple of things. One, very important one, is that back in 2003 and 2007, when Portlanders dramatically opposed charter reform at a level of three to one, their largest complaint was that they felt that it gave too much power to the mayor. They felt that it wasn't that the terminology that we saw, we read through all of their comments, was that it was a mayor power grab. And then in meeting with the public, we consistently heard more support for a more commission-based form of government, but not enough to send us all the way in that direction. More for the commission base, but still, people said they wanted a mayor who personally can ultimately hold accountable. And so we sought to find something that would answer both of those needs. And we felt by looking at a strong separation of powers, where you have a very powerful legislative element for the council and then the more executive management level for the mayor would answer both of those needs. Commissioners here that want to add to that?
Well, I'll just jump in real quick, and maybe Andrew can tag along as well. As we were the co-chairs of the Form of Government Committee, and first say that all options were considered. It wasn't the case where we immediately said, "We're not going to consider a strong mayor." We considered all of the traditional models. We looked at the ways that different cities tweak those models, and through the combination of our own research, talking with stakeholders, talking with similar cities, decided to come to where we ended. But it really was a long, long process of lots of changing and making sure that what we were proposing was responding to what community was asking for and was still giving the, you know, future council the powers that they needed to get their job accomplished. We felt that it was important that for a mayor to have more of that executive functioning, especially because the average person, they think mayor equals they are in charge of everything, right? That's not exactly how our current form works. And we wanted to make sure that they had the ability to, you know, not only while being elected by the whole city and representing all of the city's interests and overseeing the bureaus, being able to make some more executive decisions while also having a council that isn't completely diminished of power. Because one of the concerns we heard was, "That's great that you all are looking to, you know, increase the size of council and increase the ways that people have access to the ballot box, but what's the point of bringing in a more diverse representative council if you're going to strip them completely of their power?" So we really took that seriously to make sure that we weren't creating the opposite effect. And of course, also not trying to make too much of a hybrid situation. We discussed that at length because we didn't want to add to more confusion on y'all's behalf, on people governing's behalf of who's responsible for what, who's accountable to what. But we thought that we created, in the end, a form of government that had a balance of an executive mayor, a legislative council, and that administrative, like, kind of lynch point, I guess, in the middle of the city manager. So that was kind of our reasoning, but I would just say, to answer your first question, no, it wasn't that we didn't consider it. We considered all the things and came up with what we did through lots of meetings with stakeholders and research and community members.
Okay, I thank you. My colleagues are raising some point-of-order questions here in the chat. I want to get to those. So the question is, do we have public testimony on this item? This is the auditor's report. It has been filed as something of an unusual report in that it is a presentation. I honestly will have to defer to legal counsel on whether or not we take public testimony on this item. I'm honestly not sure.
Mayor, I believe we would take public testimony on this topic at this time.
All right, then why don't we do this? I'll stop asking my questions. Let's go to public testimony, three minutes each, name for the record, and then I'll take up my questioning. Because I have a couple more questions along the same lines, but I'll take that up after we've heard public testimony. Kealan, please call the first individual again, three minutes, name for the record.
First up, we have Terry Harris.
Hi, Terry.
Hi there. Thanks so much for this opportunity. I'm Terry Harris from Hillsdale. And I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to the charter, even though I understand the city council has limited options at this point. I've supplied written materials on a lot of comments, on a lot of charter topics, but my three-minute message is that the proposal before you is half decent, but also half terrible. And since the Charter Commission is lumping everything together in one question, I'm necessarily a no vote on this. This charter process is like one in Baltimore some twenty years ago. I served on a commission there to propose changes to Baltimore's multi-member council districts, which were universally acknowledged to be a failure. Ultimately, multi-member districts were repealed by a citizen initiative supported by labor, environmental and community groups, good government groups, and a huge majority of city voters. They were replaced by smaller, single-member districts. There is no need for Portland to relearn Baltimore's lessons. What lessons? Basically this. Smaller, single-member districts offer clean, direct, simple, understandable lines of accountability. And compared to multi-member districts, there are clear advantages: access, efficiency, responsiveness, clarity of function, and representation accountable to voters. Fundamental purpose of district-based representation is that council members can focus more deeply on problems in the district. In district-based representation, each council member represents the entire district, all the neighborhood, pools, all the encampments, all the crime, all the drugs, the trash, dumping sites, traffic, parking problems, and the legislative priorities. But multi-member districts simply won't fix Portland's council problems. Constituent work has to be divided between multiple members. There'll still be no single council member to call or to take responsibility. Besides the four districts, each the size of Salem or Eugene are so large that no council member will be able to attend to neighborhood-scale concerns anyway. And in this proposal, because council members will run for election against each other, internal political incentives for representing the whole district are misaligned. And this mismatch has worsened because constituents will have one ranked choice ballot, but will elect three council members. So while this scheme clearly makes getting elected easier, it makes direct up-or-down accountability voting impossible. Finally, there's no reason why voters shouldn't have the option to vote yes on the government reforms and no on an oversized, untested, bad-idea, multi-member district proposal. Nine or eleven single-member districts could have solved all these problems. Thanks. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Next up, we have Sol Mora.
Good afternoon, and members of the Portland City Council. My name is Sol Mora. I use she and her pronouns. And I'm the Civic Engagement Manager at the Coalition of Communities of Color. CCC has been honored to work alongside twelve culturally-specific community organizations to hear directly from Portlanders about the change they want to see in our city government. The themes from our engagement have been clear. Portlanders feel the current structure of city government and elections is not responsive to their communities, and Portlanders are ready for a comprehensive change. Today, I testify on behalf of CCC in support of the proposal the Charter Commission diligently shaped. This proposal works as a whole to create a more responsive, accountable, and representative city government. A mayor-council government will create the infrastructure that is necessary for our city government to better respond to community needs. The consistent leadership of a city administrator will improve the delivery of services long-term and allow bureaus to better coordinate. City council members now representing geographic districts will be able to focus on meeting with the communities of their districts to solve issues and pass laws. Lastly, the mayor elected at large will be able to champion citywide priorities, carry out laws, and break council ties. Portlanders will know who is accountable for what, and within their districts will have multiple avenues to make their concerns heard. No community is a monolith, and this proposal ensures that all voters within each district have more choices to elect a representative that will champion their issues. Ranked choice voting is a tested and a proven voting method that has led to election outcomes more reflective of the people, with more women, people of color, renters, and others getting elected. This method helps to mitigate vote splitting and promotes coalition building among groups of voters who can support multiple candidates. Since candidates benefit from sharing cross-voter support with other candidates of like-minded platforms, campaigns are more focused on broad issues rather than being focused on individuals. Across jurisdictions from Maine to New York to Utah, voters overwhelmingly report that they understand ranked choice voting. It's clear that this proposal will help to create a city government that can more responsibly meet community needs, fix the city's challenges, and also provide a more reflective outcome in our democracy. Thank you so much for the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Alphoni.
Hi, Mike. Hello, Mayor. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time today. I appreciate it. And thank you for prioritizing public input on this process. My name is Mike Alphoni. He/him. I live in northeast Portland, and I've worked in campaigns and government for over two decades. Now, I'm the Executive Director of Oregon Ranked Choice Voting, an organization working to facilitate a more robust and equitable democracy for Oregonians. We strongly support the well-researched recommendation by the Portland Charter Review Committee to eliminate exclusive primaries, adopt pro-voter ranked choice voting, and create inclusive, proportional, multi-member districts. I want to emphasize three specific points as you consider these recommendations. Number one, that ranked choice voting is well-understood by voters. Self-reported understanding is extremely high where RCV is used, especially in jurisdictions that have done a baseline of voter education. And this cuts across demographics. Consistently, over ninety percent of voters find RCV itself easy to understand, including ninety-two percent in Minneapolis and ninety-five percent in New York City, where it was just implemented for the first time. Number two, ranked choice voting is also wildly popular with voters. It is now used at some level in a majority of states in the US for everything from school boards to the US Senate. Exit polls consistently show a massive majority. As high as ninety-four percent of voters who have voted using RCV prefer it to a winner-take-all system. In three polls here in Portland, over seventy percent of voters say they would prefer it without even having used it yet. Number three, there is a myth that the proposed system is untested. Proportional RCV is actually used in multiple countries abroad and six cities here in the United States. In fact, over two dozen municipalities, including Cincinnati, Cleveland, Boulder, Sacramento, and New York City, used proportional RCV as early as 1915. It was repealed in these cities in the 1950s as part of a coordinated effort because proportional RCV kept electing people of color and candidates outside the political machine. President Johnson's Kerner Commission itself cited the repeal of proportional RCV's nullifying effect on black representation as one of the causes of leading to riots in the 60s in these cities. To summarize, RCV is understood by voters. It is preferred by voters, and it creates measurably better outcomes when used. As a Portland resident, I'm really grateful for your thoughtful work on behalf of the city. And please let us know if our organization can provide additional assistance in implementation, voter or candidate education, research, or otherwise. Thank you again for this commission for supporting the recommendations of your citizens.
Thank you, Mike.
Next up, we have Jordan Cole.
Welcome, Jordan.
Hello. My name is Jordan Cole from Goose Hollow, and I taught policy analysis and public administration as an adjunct instructor at Washington State University. I helped write the City Club of Portland's report on alternative methods of voting, "New Government for Today's Portland: Part II, Rethinking How We Vote." I'm excited to talk about the virtues of electing multiple representatives per district using ranked choice voting. I think we can all agree, regardless of our political affiliations or backgrounds, that our local government works best when all Portlanders have a seat at the decision-making table. Oftentimes, voters feel that they don't have many choices to elect a candidate that speaks to their particular issues. Multi-member districts solve this problem. They provide a path for the breadth and depth of diverse political perspectives to be heard and participate. Multi-member districts allow multiple constituencies within a geographic area to elect their preferred representatives. If multi-member districts' geographic representation is preserved, while additional identities, like being a renter or homeowner, having a high or low income, different educational attainments, race and gender, and many other political ideologies can all be expressed in the makeup of our government. in the makeup of our government. Multi-member districts are resistant to the tools of gerrymandering, cracking up communities to split their vote, or packing up minorities to waste their vote. Multi-member districts ensure residents can participate in the policymaking process by providing multiple points of access to make their concerns heard. Finally, multi-member districts ensure elected officials can better collaborate to solve localized issues specific to their area of the city. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts with you this afternoon. I look forward to working with you as we build a model example of representative democracy here in Portland.
Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate your comments today.
Next up, we have Isabella Villarreal.
Hi, Isabella.
Hello. Hi, everyone. And good afternoon, Commission members. My name is Isabella Villarreal. I use she/her pronouns. And I am the Policy and Communications Manager at NextUp. And NextUp amplifies the voice and leadership of diverse young people to achieve a more just and equitable Oregon, and we've been around for 20 years doing so. We're here today in strong support of the Charter Commission package of reforms. And since the fall of 2021, we have been working closely with the Coalition of Communities of Color to deliver on hosting three-plus educational workshops around the Portland Charter Review Process and specifically engaging young Black Indigenous and youth of color through the sustained effort. And we really heard loud and clear from young Portlanders that they are more than ready to change our systems of election and government with strong support specifically for geographic representation, proportional ranked-choice voting, and expanding the council to better represent all communities. And for too long, we've really seen the dysfunction of winner-take-all elections, and this reforms package squarely addresses this problem. With proportional RCV, voters will have greater opportunity to elect leaders that share their values and interests citywide. In conclusion, proportional ranked-choice voting, as well as geographic representation and expanding city council, will help us end winner-take-all politics and provide for a more representative, reflective, and responsive government. We know this is absolutely necessary for just and equitable representation for our communities, and we're really excited to see this package of reforms. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here, Isabella.
Next up, we have Mark Stephen.
Hi, Mark. Hello. Thank you for having me here. My name is Mark Stephan. I am on the Board of Governors for City Club. I am also a political scientist at Washington State University. And I'm here to actually talk really about just one thing. And that's the really important step the commission made in bringing these recommendations forward as one full proposal. I think this was a critical part of their decision-making, and I want to explain just briefly why. I'm not sure if they would describe it this way. The commissioners are here. Some of them are here. And so maybe they might have a different perspective. But I ultimately think that they took a systems approach to the set of reforms that need to happen in the city of Portland. And they thought about each of these aspects of this one proposal, partly in relationship to each other. So the notion that we could, you know, pull out parts of this, these different aspects of the proposal, as if they could go forward without the energy and what's gained from having the other aspects, I think is faulty logic. Ultimately, this is an important measure because it has all of these working together moving forward. To take any of them out is to undermine our movement towards better governance, better representation, more diverse representation in the city of Portland. And I think as we go forward in the months ahead, quite honestly, this case will be made to the city, to the citizens and the voters of Portland. And I think this will be very persuasive. These are not, you know, individual sort of pieces as much as they are interconnected synergistic aspects of reform that Portland needs. So I commend the commission, and I hope that the commissioners, the city commissioners can support the importance of this being one measure moving forward for the city. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Robert Weinstein.
Good afternoon, Robert.
My name is Bob Weinstein. Mayor Wheeler and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. The Charter Commission is proposing that we go from a government that no one is using to a government that has never been used. In its report to the council, the commission stated, "From the start, the Charter Commission has understood that the problems facing Portland are too fundamental and interrelated to be resolved by a patchwork of repairs." Yet that is exactly what they produced. A patchwork of various concepts, a small number of multi-member districts, an even number of seats, a version of ranked-choice voting or RCV that actually takes votes away from candidates and distributes them to others. And to make matters worse, they are lumping their patchwork, all of the good, the bad, and the ugly, into a single proposal to be put before the voters with no choice, forcing people to swallow or reject the whole package. They want ranked choice, but no choice for the voters. The commission report itself is, at best, less than even-handed. I reviewed the extensive public comment received in May. There was significantly more opposition than support for the small number of multi-member districts, the lack of a mayoral veto, and a package vote. Is that in the report? The report says RCV is used in a number of large cities. Omitted from the report is that the cities are all using it very differently than what is proposed here, generally instant runoff in single-member districts. The report states that Clear Ballot, the county's voting system vendor, is preparing for a 2023 ranked-choice voting election in Colorado that is very similar to the Charter Commission's proposal. Election officials in the two relevant Colorado jurisdictions starting to use RCV next year told me both are using RCV instant runoff, one only for the mayor. Both use Dominion, not Clear Ballot. Bottom line, not at all very similar to the commission proposal. I believe that when the people of Portland see the complexity of what the commission is proposing and they're rightfully concerned about the small number of districts, no maps, no accountability, spending $43 million over three years that could go to critical services, a unique and confusing method of election, and no choice, they will vote no on the proposal. When they do, I urge you to place before the voters next year a sensible charter. Take the good proposals of the commission, the roles of council members, the role of the mayor and possibly manager, and then fix what they would not, such as an odd number of single-member districts with maps published prior to the election, the promised check and balance regarding council lawmaking and mayoral veto, and provide your constituents, the voters, a choice. I have submitted more detailed written testimony on these and other points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last testifier is Jenna Kane.
Good afternoon, Jenna.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give testimony to Portland City Council. My name is Jenna Cho-Kane, and I'm a community volunteer with 350 PDX, a local 501(c)(3) organization. I wanted to acknowledge the incredible work of the city charter commissioners as well as the coalitions of community color, of coalitions of community color for their community engagement work. And responding to the Portland voters on the concerns with the form of government and elections, I strongly support the three proposed reforms for the November ballot to expand into multi-member districts with at least three elected officials per district, instituting ranked-choice voting, and moving to a commissioner for, sorry, city council form of government with the hiring of a city manager and administrator to manage the city's bureaus. I would also like to see that the multi-member districts are selected through democratic lottery using a policy jury concept. That is something that has been successfully used with the Oregon for Citizens Initiative Review, as well as a number of other cities, as well as countries, for the public to give input on the decision-making process to select these multi-member districts. Furthermore, for Phase Two of the commissioners' work, tackling the pressing and ubiquitous and dangerous challenges of climate in Phase Two is something that I strongly support, as well as organizing an environmental justice and climate subcommittee of experts, also establishing a citywide participatory budgeting process, and including an environmental rights and responsibilities or a green amendment for all Portland residents into the city charter. In addition, ensuring that these provisions to be included into the, into the city's charter would provide a mechanism for citizens and their rights to be included in all city-making decisions. The commission has demonstrated that it has the capacity to take on big issues and come up with thoughtful, well-considered, and bold solutions. The challenges of the climate and environmental justice requires no less of a, of an effort from Phase One into Phase Two. With your support and decision-making, the city of Portland has the opportunity to join other forward-thinking cities in tackling these enormous challenges comprehensively and as a community instead of bearing our heads. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Jenna. Appreciate it. And Kealan, that completes public testimony. Is that correct?
It does, Mayor.
Very good. And I was asking some questions, but I'll defer to my colleagues. If they have questions, I'll hold off till the end. See, and I'll go ahead and jump in again. Thank you, everybody who testified. That was good testimony, and I appreciate it. Commissioner Maps, you go ahead, and I'll follow up. Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Maps and Commissioner Ryan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just a little bit slow with the hand button. I just have a couple of quick technical questions that I think we can dispense with quickly. And I don't know whoever in the Charter Review Commission who feels equipped to answer can just jump on in. First, the combination of reforms that the Charter Review Commission is proposing is unique, especially the multi-member districts and ranked-choice voting. I was just wondering if, if the commission could point us to any other jurisdictions in America, or even the world, frankly, that use both ranked-choice voting and multi-member districts?
Yeah, Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Australia.
Does Cambridge use, I'm pretty familiar with Cambridge. Does Cambridge use multi, multi-member districts?
Yeah. Well, they have a single district that is multi-member, yes.
Well, I-
It is a district with multi-members that are elected by ranked-choice voting.
How about, could you, I used to live adjacent to, I used to live in Somerville, which is adjacent to Cambridge. So I'm very familiar with the Cambridge.
I used to live in Cambridge seven years-
Oh, really? I'm a Union Square guy. So I miss it very much. In fact, I will be back there soon. Should I ever get to take a vacation, which has not happened for years. But as you know, knowing Cambridge, you know, that is essentially a single political unit. It's a town that uses ranked-choice voting. I think the more interesting dynamic, which I'm still trying to get some intuition over, is what, what happens when you have, let's say, four, four multi-member districts? Is there a place, is there someplace in America or outside of America that uses both the ranked-choice system and multi-member districts?
There is in Australia. I'm not going to pretend that I'm a big expert on Australia right now, although I have looked into it. And I'd be happy to give you more information on that as we go along, but I don't know if anyone wants to hear me talking here at length on Australia. I will say that there was a report put out by the Parliament of Australia saying that this system increased the chances of minor parties and independents winning seats. Voters had more freedom to target a non-performing MP, and this system provided no safe seats for complacent or tired party members.
Okay. Well, I'm kind of familiar with the Australia system, and they do a lot of really innovative things. They also have, they make it mandatory to vote. If you don't show up to vote in Australia-
They've been doing this for over 100 years now.
Okay. So I ask because as I tried to just develop some intuition around-
Can I just jump in one second? This is Commissioner Ready. I think Cornell University actually just published a study in 2021 that laid out the combination of ranked-choice voting with multi-member districts actually produces fairer outcomes and better outcomes for communities. So I will link that and send that to you so we can take a look.
That would be great. I got my PhD in government from Cornell, so I'm sure I know whoever put that proposal together. I'm just trying to get a sense of how this actually, where this has been tried and where it's been tried, how it actually works. I'd love to see what my colleagues at Cornell have put together. So I'll look for that and also do a little bit of, if anyone has any additional information about how the unique combination of multi-member districts and ranked-choice voting has worked in Australia, that might inform our experience in Portland. And all with your help, I will figure out, I'll take a look at Cornell's research. The second question I had is, if I understand it correctly, this is going to be one, a single-ballot measure, which surprises me, surprises me for a couple of reasons. One is, I think there's a state law that out there that says that, that basically ballot initiatives should deal with one topic. But when I take a look at like the city manager thing, the multi-member district thing, the ranked-choice thing, the expanding the size of council thing, those strike me as being really fundamentally different questions. And I know we had some public testimony about why we put these together. But I'd like to hear some more intuition about why this doesn't, why this isn't four separate votes. It strikes me, at least to be consistent with the spirit of the law, we would break these out into separate votes, or leave separate votes for the people of Portland.
Commissioner Urbilow, can you take this one?
I love that you're assigning it. Sure, I will try. The conversation we had really kind of fit into three buckets. One was legal, which you just referenced, Commissioner Maps, in terms of it is ability to withstand any legal challenges under the single subject. And in fact, there is an abundance of islaw and precedent that as long as things fall under what's called a unifying principle, which all of these reforms do, that we are confident that we would withstand any legal challenge to the title if that was the case. Just recently, the precedent of Ananthan Hearst versus Klarno had very similar concepts grouped together. And again, I feel like we have confidence to withstand a legal challenge. The second bucket is policy, and one of the testifiers mentioned this altogether. We have always looked at these reforms as interconnected. In fact, not just interconnected, but interdependent. And when we talked about whether or not, when there was some legal ambiguity about having to separate them out, the fact that, at least with the moving to districts and changing the form of government, that we would have to include trigger language, where one could not exist without the other, which would lead to further voter confusion if we were to split them out. So there's absolute policy reason that we're proposing them all together because they hang together and they, they don't exist effectively toward the goals that we set out when we first started separately. And the third is political. And, you know, we've heard a lot of folks say that their main priority might be changing form of government. And I would offer to them that if that is their priority, then they would want us to link it to ranked-choice voting and multi-member districts. We've had three separate polls that have been offered to us that have showed us consistently that when you add in ranked-choice voting and multi-member districts, it actually bumps up voters' propensity to vote for a form of government change. Form of government, it was polling at, you know, 51% on its own. And anywhere, depending on the research that you look at, it bumps up from five to 12 points when you add ranked-choice voting and multi-member districts.
Okay. Thank you, Becca. Let me just do a quick follow-up. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know about the, how the single-subject piece is gonna plays out. But I think I understand the principle, and the principle, or at least the spirit of the laws, like when we send something to voters, it should be kind of on a single topic. And I can understand, maybe you can lawyer your way out around that, or maybe you can, there are political reasons to not do that. But there does some, to me, at least, there seems to be a good government reason, just for clarity sake. I don't know. Have you given up on, or should we not? How seriously should we take the, just the spirit of the law that generally when we send something to the ballot, it should be on a single topic?
Well, my response is that I fundamentally believe that all of these policies are on a general topic, which is changing the structure of the city of government, whether it's elections or form of government. changing the structure of the city of government, whether it's elections or form of government. It is both legally defensible under a unifying principle, as well as connected to the spirit of the law.
Okay. Well, I mean, I understand how they hang together, but I'll just say, and after this, I'll lower my hand a little bit. You know, let's just take something like city manager and ranked choice voting. Both of those exist out there in the real political world, so it's possible for these things to exist. But it also seems to me as a voter that I might just have, and as a voter, I can just tell you, I do have probably, I'm differently inclined to vote for a city manager versus ranked choice voting. And probably my deepest disappointment here, and in general, I really respect the work you've done. My deepest disappointment with the process and the products that we're seeing today is the fact that voters will not have a chance to consider each one of these questions separately. I think that would be really helpful for democracy and make better policy. But that is not my choice. With that, colleagues, I will lower my hand and return the floor to, for further conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Ryan?
You're on mute.
That happened. I just wanted to make sure we had a meeting where someone said, please unmute yourself. And also, I wanted, for the record, I did not
Until somebody says you're on.
Exactly. And I did not live in Cambridge, so I want to put that in the record as well. And also, I just have to say, I've been in bed with COVID since Saturday, so it's still out there, and I'm really foggy right now. So this is a really important meeting, so I wanted to, one, thank you, co-chairs, Billings, Noon, and Gloria Cruz for your service and all the commissioners. You're putting in a lot of time for our city, and everyone should understand what a big commitment that is. I appreciate it. So I'm going to ask some questions that I assume you've had a lot of dialogue about, and I think it's just fair for the record to have some transparent dialogue about it in front of, in the public record. So a lot of your focus on the reforms is how people get elected, is how I could see it. And as such, I wanted to highlight something I'm really proud of as a Portlander, and that is the the good work that's gone on over the past couple of years when it comes to campaign finance reform in our city. The open and accountable elections were an amazing start, probably the most progressive inclusion, way to include people in the process. And then and then the small donor program took it to another level. I've had the experience of running under both of those and respect it, and it really has made a difference. So my question to all of you is, when some of this research first began at City Club and when it, and as it evolved, I don't know if you had the crosswalk overlay of this. So what type of dialogue did you have about the importance of of the fact that we have these influential progressive initiatives that have been passed in campaign finance reform, which has definitely improved inclusion of candidates? How did that impact your dialogue when it came to what you came up with today? I just wanted to hear a little bit about that.
Commissioner Avolos, do you want to take that one?
Being voluntold, I will gladly do that. So you're asking a complicated question, and I can say that yes, it took a part, but I wouldn't say that was like the biggest reason we chose to go down the path we did. I think ultimately, the way we were looking at the form of, or I'm sorry, the city elections reforms was about lowering the barrier for people to have a chance and a shot at getting elected. Yes, the campaign finance reforms are very transformational in adding capacity for grassroots campaigns to be able to be competitive. But at the end of the day, they're still competing for 600,000 votes. And as somebody who ran under that system and used the open and accountable elections, there's a lot more to it than just that. And so having the option to, you know, rank your candidates, having the option to be represented by multiple people, having district representation, all of those things are contributing to lowering the barriers for more diverse candidates to be represented. So I think that it goes hand in hand, but definitely just those reforms were not enough to show, or to lower the barriers that are a big issue. One of those are finances and the fact that you have to reach 600,000 voters, and you and I both know it costs a lot of money per voter to reach them. So having even just a smaller turf makes a big difference in that front.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to weigh in, or is that my, do I get to ask that question? Is there anyone else? This is just a meeting, so here we are. We're having an open discussion.
I'll just say, Commissioner, I think for what our guiding lights have been is accountability at the center. And so, you know, I think when we think about accountability and outcomes, and so when we think about the package as we proposed it, I think having the outcome of participatory government where access to maybe marginalized communities or communities otherwise not part of the process, it was really important. And I think that just as like a top-level discussion point, that was always consistent through our discussion.
Thank you so much. My next question gets at the heart of the matter for me on what I think is more under the iceberg, on what's challenging about moving work forward for the good of the people in the City of Portland. And that's that we have 23 bureaus, and we have a lot of silos and power structures that sometimes just just make your head hurt on a good day. And so I just am trying to get to how what you're proposing would allow a city manager to have the agency, because anyone, I think, with any organizational development background would look at the City of Portland and and think, well, this is a great contract, because there's a lot of work to do here. It's pretty messy. And a lot of it starts with 23 bureaus. In fact, in today's meeting, I had a moment to discover we had a, what was it? The hydro power, hydroelectric bureau. Who knew? And so there's just a lot of bureaus in the City of Portland. And I'm trying to get to how having going from five to 13 electors would bring efficiency to that equation, which I really think is going to take a lot of courage and a lot of effort, and will make our city run much more efficiently if we get to the bottom of how to streamline our bureaus. How will this electorate that expands in size in such a large way be a positive influencer of that?
Commissioners Ready and Kitchen, I see your heads nodding. Does one of you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'm happy to take this, Commissioner Ready. I think one of the most important things of this proposal is having much more coordinated strategy that lives in the office of the mayor and the city manager who will manage bureaus. And I think one of the hopes that we have is when you have a more centralized system of leadership and management of operations, you can actually address some of those silos issues, and you could actually address some of the reorganization issues that one has, because you don't have city commissioners managing bureaus. And so it was a critical, critical factor in making sure that we have professional coordination and breaking down of silos, but also the political accountability that Portlanders want. Portlanders want political accountability, and you all, as City of Commissioners, know that better than anyone. And so we are able to weave that thread together and give that city manager the ability to look across the agency, be able to really think about how things work together or don't, and have some efficiency, and then have the backup of a mayor who has a vision and a citywide vision to be able to deliver on that. So we think we've actually threaded the needle quite well, and we're hoping for more efficiencies. We're hoping for more coordination, and we're hoping for better policy coming from city councillors who are spending their time closer to the ground, closer to the people of Portland.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I see that, Commissioner Avolos, you also made a comment in the chat, which I think it's important for us to say these out loud in a meeting like this. That is why we created an executive mayor and legislative council structure, and everyone's heads are nodding on that. Can you tell me more about the legislative council structure? For some reason, that's not in my brain yet.
If you could just wait a minute, it looked like Commissioner Kitchen was about to add something to what Commissioner Ready said.
Yes, I just wanted to support what Commissioner Ready said, and also just mention that along the lines of the legislative function of the council members, since they're not directly managing the bureaus, but they will possibly have committees that would specialize in different bureaus, we do think there are going to be many cost savings and efficiency savings by having more coordinated management. So that was a key part of it, and key part of our decision-making in the structure that we proposed. So I just, those are factors that stood out to me as reasons to support the the operation that we're proposing.
I have to jump in here for one minute, colleague. Closed captioning is having an issue with YouTube. For those of you who are watching YouTube, if closed captions are needed, you can go to www.watch openly signal pdx.org/cable. The team is also working on getting full session posted on YouTube. So sorry for the technical problems. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor. This next question, I've been thinking about it for a while, and I know you've had conversations about conflict of interest. I trust that. I know myself and probably everyone in this Zoom room has served on search committees, and when you're, when you're making the criteria for the position that you're seeking to hire, you, it's pretty ethics 101 that you don't allow yourself to be the candidate to receive that job. So what kind of conversations did you have as a commission around conflict of interest? Say, if this does pass, is there a conversation that would eliminate those on the commission to run for office in the first round? Just tell me a little bit more about that.
Maybe I'll answer. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask maybe if Commissioner Ryan could explain why he believes that's a conflict of interest. I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, yeah, I thought I made it clear. So when I've been involved in any, say, job, any job search, and I'm on a search committee, and you're, you know, working on the criteria, which this really becomes like a criteria for how one gets elected, it's pretty standard that, you know, you're not, you don't have an opportunity to be a candidate for that position. So I've had people ask me about this with this group, just assuming that there's some sort of dialogue and process that you've been through for this. And so that's my question. My question is, what kind of conversation did you have about the conflict of interest that might be imposed if you're on the exact charter commission that put forth the guidelines on what the process and what the guidelines are like to run for office? And would that put you in an advantage? I'm just, I'm just asking, like, was it a, was it a conversation that you had as a commission? And where did that conversation land?
I just want to expand on the conflict of interest, but point out some related things. So we did actually have extensive conversations around conflict of interest and addressed it in two ways. One, when we're looking at, not necessarily our conflict, but we did have extensive conversations around conflict of interest in two buckets. One is when we're looking at the districting commission. So if you look at the language proposed in the charter, we wanted to remove all barriers to participation, so it was open to any and all Portlanders in order to help do the important work of drawing the first lines, but it is not open to city council members or candidates. Again, that same conversation around conflict of interest, and conflict of interest is exactly why we put the new language in the charter on the salary commission, because we wanted to remove any appearance of conflict of interest. So those were the conversations that we had around conflict of interest.
So as it stands now, anyone that served on this Charter Review Commission could run for the, for city council?
Actually, we did have
Actually, I had one.
Charter commission who was running for city council. And that was Vedi Mazursky. And we had a number of conversations over whether that was allowed or not, and ultimately, speaking to the attorney, the city attorney, it was allowed. He was a volunteer member and was allowed to both run and serve on the mission.
And that was in this current round, so it's not under the guidelines that we're discussing for this charter, correct?
Correct. It would be for the current round, but
So perhaps Lea would have to weigh in on the question that I'm asking.
Yeah. I think it's a great question, and we'll ask it. I think it's a good one, and I'm putting it on a list right now.
Yeah, yeah. I just didn't want to not ask the question, because I've had people ask me about it, and I didn't know the answer. So there's no
No, I love questions I don't have answers to, because we got to get the answers. So that's great.
It's one reason I'm not an attorney, because I often ask questions I don't know the answers to. I'll go ahead and stop there, and maybe we'll do another round. I just have maybe one or two other thoughts, but they'll probably be asked by my other colleagues. Turn it over to you, Commissioner Rubio.
Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you. First, I want to thank all the commissioners and the co-chairs and every set of co-chairs that's taken their turn over the course of this work. I can't imagine the countless hours you've put in, and I just want to really appreciate the community conversations that you've had on this and all the research. It's very evident, the work that you've put into this. My question, well, first, I want to say, Commissioner Ready, thank you for your explanation about how you saw the role of the mayor and the city manager, or administrator, whatever the title is going to be. It's clear, that makes things clearer to me. And so I totally understand and agree about the need for leadership and accountability, particularly in that role. My question is about then, how, what is the role, or how do you see the mayor? What is the interplay between the council and the mayor's role then? And how does the mayor with their vision and policy agenda, then, how does that integrate with the? I'm trying to get a picture of how that works together, particularly because the mayor will not have a veto. So what is the lever of interplay there? And then I have a couple more questions.
You all want me to answer that? Well, thank you for the question, and it did, I think the question that you raised, we've spent a lot of time in animated conversation of playing out scenarios around this. And I think we wanted to keep the relevance of the mayor of being a kind of a leader for the whole city, having a platform that they are going to run on and want to implement, for them to have the ability to introduce, you know, ideas and policies, and to have a clear power and respect for the council to be the policymakers, especially those that are closest to the ground in the communities and in the districts. So I think where we thread that needle was the mayor, of course, being able to introduce policy, being able to also tee up the needs from the bureaus, because the bureaus are going to be producing the needs of policy, right, to continue to advance their service delivery, and also to have, you know, the council be ultimately the votes that 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 matter in terms of passing policy and then handing it to the mayor and the city administrator to implement. So I think we're really looking at kind of a balance of power without constricting the kind of dreaming that people need to have in the city and the innovation and boldness. So that's what we were trying to thread on in both of those arenas to make sure that as voters select their leaders, whether it's in the form of mayor and in the form of their council members, that those values and ideas from the communities are being rolled up into policymaking, and then effective implementation and accountability at the city level. I don't know if that answers your question, and my fellow commissioners definitely, you know, weigh in on anything I've missed here.
That's helpful. And yeah, I don't know if there's anybody else that wanted to chime in. I'll move on to my next question. So you talked a little bit about, this for the whole commission, phase two. Can you talk a little bit about how you made the decision, like what, how you decided what went into phase one and what you would put into phase two? And then And then the second part of that question is, have you considered non-citizen voting as a part of phase two? And also, you referenced climate environmental justice work or as a topic. So I'm curious too about what kind of things the commissioners are thinking about that.
Commissioner Castaneda, would you like to talk a little bit about phase two?
And thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for your question. This is something that we've been getting a lot of comments about recently as we're beginning to, or now that we wrapped up phase one. And so we will be actually looking at phase two starting this Thursday. I'm not entirely sure as to what the appetite is among the commission, since we've been at it for 18 months now. So I imagine that we'll be taking on a narrow set of issues, if we do take any at all. But that process will begin this Thursday. And there's great work being done by the staff now to kind of see where the charter review commission is at now, to see what those areas may be. And the non-citizen voting specifically is an issue that's been raised multiple times, though I can't make any promises right now as to whether that will be something that gets moved to this next phase for potentially next year. Sorry, I keep getting a lot of static in my thing, so it's like messing up my speaking pattern. So yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Rubio, I don't want to stop your questions. I just want to say that we have the city attorney, Maya Haim, here to answer one of Commissioner Ryan's questions. So when you're finished, she's here.
Okay. I'm done. But you are, you are talking about non-citizen. It is something that you've discussed.
It's definitely come up as one of the high-level interest areas for our commission. We will be having a meeting, is it tomorrow? For discussions, and Diana Nunez is here from the city staff, having a conversation tomorrow about priorities and focus areas since it's from now till the end of December. So many of us are, many of us, I am very excited about this topic, as well as our environmental justice kind of focus as well.
Commissioner Rubio, just to answer one part of your question, the reason we made this decision to separate is because we felt that the issues we tackled on form of government and city elections were really foundational to all the other issues we wanted to discuss. And so we felt we couldn't move forward on all of those without tackling the elephant in the room, essentially. And that was such a big lift in itself because we're completely changing the structure. So that's why we separated all those other issues, to give us time to get the foundational stuff first.
Thank you.
Mancha, are you a member of the commission?
No, this is Maya from the city attorney's office.
Maya, I apologize.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
I wanted to just briefly weigh in on the conflict of interest question. And my understanding is the question was whether members of the current charter commission would have a conflict of interest if they chose to run for office in the future. And the answer is no. And the reason the answer is no is because the legal conflicts of interest are interested in money and financial gain. And the policymaking that's happening here will be decided by the voters in November. And all candidates will have an equal opportunity to understand the rules and participate in elections going forward.
Absolutely. And I would even go farther, Maya, and say the odds are that you will lose money if you are elected to the Portland City Council. But thank you for that. Commissioner Rubio, were you done with your questions?
I am.
I just have a few, and I really appreciate this conversation. Thank you all, particularly members of the commission, for sticking around a little bit longer than I think you probably anticipated and answering some of our questions. And ultimately, this isn't a decision of the city council. You have voted with your supermajority to refer this directly to the residents of the city of Portland. Obviously, you are their body, not our body. So our comments here are truly for informational purposes only as opposed to policymaking. I wanted just to sort of continue where I was in my line of questioning. And honestly, these are questions that I'm being asked, and I want to be able to speak intelligently. If I'm going to be asked, since I didn't sit on the commission, I don't want to misrepresent the commission's work. But as I'm sure you're aware, a number of people are saying, well, you know, there are hundreds of cities throughout the United States, there are many that are the same size, that have the same issues, the same complexity, the same types of issues that they're wrestling with. Why not use a plug-and-play form of government? Something that already exists in a city like Atlanta, or Denver, or Seattle, or Boston, or somewhere else, where they've had decades to live with that model and tweak it and improve it? Why not seek a model like that that is, you know, I guess in government speak, we call that an established best practice? Why not do that instead of taking the risk of proposing something completely new?
I'll take that one.
Thank you.
And that is that it's actually not correct that you can find another city that has the same issues. More importantly, you can't find another city with the same population. Portland is unusual, for one thing, and it's overwhelming whiteness in the dispersion of the various minority groups throughout the city. And dispersal, I should say, in the dispersal of renters and homeowners. So we don't have, for example, if you look at some of the cities like Boston, they have very distinct ethnic or racial groupings. We do not. We also have, in general, a younger population. We have similar but different issues to other cities. So in each case, what we were trying to do was take the best practices of each that dealt with certain issues that were similar to ours, without ever assuming that we could take whole cloth. You compared us to Seattle. Well, Seattle has Amazon, it has Boeing, it has Microsoft. Portland doesn't have that kind of money. So there is no way that you can take one city and say, this matches us. But rather, we had to fine-tune a proposal that would match us, taking into consideration the various challenges and the demographics of our city.
Can I just weigh in to follow up on that? I think the other question that we pose for ourselves, and I think as you as city commissioners pose this all the time, of what models can we look at in terms of progressive and good policy outcomes in cities where we have really the kind of good policies around housing, around the economic, addressing economic inequality? And so we even took that angle of like, let's look at the cities that have policies that we really like. And we talked to organizations that convene city leaders across the country. And everyone said that there is no plug-and-play model, that there is no one way to get to that shining beacon of a city. And in fact, what you have to do is really look at your demographics, your civic institutions. Like, what do you have to work with to then bolster and improve and grow? And I think that connects back to what Melanie is talking about, which is, how do we build a structure that both addresses kind of the past harms and the problems that we have with the commission form of government and moves us into a much more propelled democratic process where we have more Portlanders who can actually serve and lead and bring their own kind of issues and local-to-the-ground issues? So that's what we did. And you can look, all of its public documents, especially for city commissioners, to go into our files and look at all of the interviews, all of the discussions we've had, all of the research. And you will find there is no plug-and-play. And what we tried to do is bring the best of what we can do to fit the conditions that we are today. So I'm very proud of that. And I think as city commissioners, we'd love for you and your staff to join us as we do that deep dive in what we've done and look at all the interviews, and you'll find that you will come to the same conclusion.
Thank you, Raheem. And I also, since we ask questions, we tend to ask questions about things we either don't agree with or things we don't understand. I want to acknowledge some important steps forward. And there are two areas where the commission form of government has proven to be problematic, from my perspective, over decades, not just in the current situation, but over decades. And the first, of course, is the nonsensical aspect of the commission form of government, where you have legislators also serving as executive managers of large, complex organizations. And I appreciate the fact that you bifurcated that, put it under a city manager as part of your thinking. I think that makes good sense. I do want to, and I'll look forward to hearing more of the debate around ranked choice voting and the merits or the challenges around four districts versus more districts or multiple people being elected from one district. The area that is of great interest to me gets to the second problem that I see with the commission form of government. And it was mentioned earlier that the number one issue that the public had asked to be addressed was around political accountability. And I really appreciated hearing that called out as a primary concern. And having lived in this form of government as the mayor in a very weak mayor form of government, and I'm not saying I'm personally a weakling, I'm saying the form of government gives the mayor very limited authority, I have found that there is a massive disconnect between responsibility and authority. And it may have worked in the past, when Portland was a growing city, when there was political consensus, when there was a lot of resources and people coming into the community, a lot of optimism around the community. I think we could get away with the commission form of government, provided we had the right leaders in place. And we often did, and we should acknowledge that. But now we're in this time where we have an unprecedented number of simultaneous worst-case scenario crises impacting our city. And the accountability and responsibility piece now becomes more important than ever. And I'll just give you the kinds of conversations I have. I'll be out in the community, and somebody will say, well, I have this problem with my local park. There's a tree down, and I need you to fix it. I'll say, I'm really sorry, that's Commissioner Rubio. Or somebody will say, there's a parking issue in front of my business. What can you do about it? I'll say, well, that's Commissioner Hardisty. Or somebody will raise a question about utilities, and I'll say, that's Commissioner Maps. And for people who have come to Portland recently from other cities that have more traditional forms of mayoral leadership, they're bewildered to hear that answer. So I have watched with great interest the conversation around the role of mayor vis-à-vis the legislative body, the city council in particular. And I appreciate the fact that during our work session, I did raise, and I believe others raised, the concern about the lack of a veto, or excuse me, the lack of a tiebreaker. And I appreciate that you, as commissioners, heard that interest on the part of this council and others, and you made that change, and I want to acknowledge that and thank you for it. I'm still concerned about the lack of veto. And I'll tell you why. Democracy does not always function smoothly by design. A little bit of messiness in democracy is not a bad thing because what you get in exchange is accountability and you get clear lines of responsibility. My question is, under the form of government that you have proposed, I'm not clear that if the mayor has neither the ability to make decisions about policy or priorities or presumptively budget, and the mayor does not have the ability to veto a proposal offered up by the city council, how is the mayor not an employee of the legislative body? And that is a question I'm getting from lots of people.
I'm going to push that one to, who wants to take this one?
Andrew does.
Oh, I didn't see Andrew. Thank you, Andrew.
I mean, you know, when I think about it, Mayor, I think to say that the mayor would be beholden strictly to the legislative branch, I think is somewhat dramatic and somewhat disingenuous. I think the implementation of policy is a huge power unto itself and creates a lot of dynamic to influence how we receive services as Portlanders. And then the ability to then propose legislation to council, I think we spent a lot of time discussing that fact and the understanding that, you know, both through the administrative roles of bureau directors and the city manager, you're able to really formulate and develop reasonable and digestible policy that would come up to council for a vote. I think one thing we discussed a lot about is the clear separation of powers and being able to ensure that the will of the overarching goals of the city are achieved as set by council, and so that, you know, the mayor, along with the city manager, are able to execute on those while also having dialogue between council. And I think that, you know, I don't know...
Let me jump in because you're making a good point, but I want to go in a slightly different direction on it, and I appreciate what you're saying. But here, let me give you an example. And we run into this in other cities where they do have the strong mayor form of government. The city council, which is very close to the ground, and in the case of this model, they were elected in one of four districts, would deliberate and pass a policy. They would effectively pass and fund a policy directive, which they would then send to the mayor. And then I presume, since the mayor does not have the ability to veto said policy, it is the mayor's obligation to implement the policy. In other cities, if the mayor does not support the policy, the mayor has the ability to veto the city council. And they have to stand up in front of God and country and a majority of their city council and give reasons why they do not think it's in the best interest of the city at large to pursue a certain policy. And then they're held accountable for that. My concern is, in the absence of that tool, where does the buck stop? If the council gives, for any reason, a flawed or a not fully baked proposal to the mayor and to the city manager and says, implement it, and then it blows up, couldn't you conceivably get into this finger-pointing game where the council says, well, the mayor and the city manager screwed up the implementation? And then the mayor and the city manager point to the council and say, well, you gave us a dumb, poorly thought-out idea. Nobody is ultimately responsible for the implementation of that policy. Or maybe you could tell me in that scenario, who is responsible? Where does the buck stop?
I mean, I can just give you my personal take. My personal take is that the mayor is ultimately accountable for executing the direction of council through policymaking. And so, I mean, that's my take.
And is that the majority opinion? Is that the thinking of your commission?
That was what we spent a lot of time discussing and a lot of, yeah, a lot of consensus around that point. And I will just say, right, Mayor, I mean, we can come up with any, we are at the ninth hour, and we are now getting all the feedback from our, you know, various constituents, and some of it was heard today through public comment. You know, who disagrees, agrees, and for what reasons? And I will just say, like, we can shop-talk any of these out to failure. And I think that is the great value and benefit of our system, right, in the United States, is to be able to have governance discussions and governance grow over time for the needs of a city or a jurisdiction. And I think we're in that great experiment continually, right?
I respect your opinion, and I appreciate it. I'm just going to ask one technical question, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Ryan. And we'll be mindful of the fact we've already kept you well over the time we promised, and we really appreciate it. It's a good conversation. Just a technical question. So based on the timeframe that was put in the slide deck, I am assuming that city commissioners who were elected in 2022 will serve a two-year term, and then everybody runs for reelection. Is that correct? Nodding her head yes. Debbie, is that your understanding? You don't have to be 100% right today. I'm just asking out of curiosity. I'm, I'm just asking out of curiosity.
No, that, that is, that is correct. The, all, all the positions will be elected, you know, in 2024.
Okay, so none, just to be clear and transparent, none of, and Candace is confirming that as well. None of us here who are currently elected and sitting on this council get a pass. And I just want to be clear about that. All of us would have to run for reelection under the new models. Nobody gets to step right into the new model. Does that also include the auditor?
Yes. The auditor would run again in, in 2024. And actually, because of this, the cycle would also run again in 2026.
Excellent, thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there and staying with us. This has been great dialogue. I, I noticed that, well, anyway, we have one person here on, on the call that I haven't heard from. And it, and I know that there were 17 people that approved this, there were three that did not. That's 15%. So we haven't given 0% of a voice to the dissenters. So David, I just have a very blunt question for you. Why did you vote no? You're representing the three that, that voted no.
Well, I can't speak for the other two. I guess I can just give you a quick summary of where I came down in this. As you know, I joined the commission in March, I think it was. So the bulk of the commission's recommendations have been deliberated for eight months. I think my colleagues worked really hard to come up with a proposal that they thought met the needs of the people of Portland. I just disagree there. People are really are looking for change, no question. But I don't think this is the change we need. Just a couple of things, there's a lot of detail that could go into. I do think the mayor should have been given a veto as part of this recommendation. But my biggest concern has to do with the multi-member district and the pretty complicated method for electing those counselors within those districts. This is not something that's been tested in the United States. There is no city that has used this combination of multi-member districts and this form of voting. We didn't have any case studies or examples that told us how it affected accountability, how it affected incumbency. And it's just, it's completely untested. So my concern is that we're taking a former government, unique in the country, that we know doesn't work, and we're replacing it with a former government that frankly is an experiment. And I just think it's too risky at this point in our city's history. I mean, that's the bottom line for me.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Knowles.
Yeah, so.
I think what I'm hearing a theme is with some on the dissent is that it's the bundling, that there were parts of this that you were good, that you were supportive of, and then there were parts that you're not. And I think you made it really clear what those are. I don't know, is there anyone from the auditor's office here? This might be a question for them. It's, or at least it's just something I want to put on the public record. If this doesn't pass in November, and I'm accepting, and I'm going to dig deeper into how I'll vote myself. I'm learning a lot today, which is helpful. But if this doesn't pass in November, we don't have to wait for another, what would be the process of reloading to do something, to send something back to the voters? Does the city council have the agency to do that? Will this commission that stays together through December of, does anyone have any insight into that? I don't think that the voters want to wait another decade for our commission to sit around and, and to do all this work that you've done and come back with another proposal. So I'm, I just wanted to add on the public record. And Commissioner Kitchen, I could tell you're ready to answer it.
Yes, and the, I mean, the, what, what is in the charter is that there is a, you know, that the, that the charter commission can be formed. It needs to be formed at least every 10 years, but it can be formed more often than that. So that's one possibility. Another possibility is city council can always send things to the ballot. That, the city council has that power to do that. And initiatives, you know, through the usual initiative petition process can send things on the charter to the ballot. And we have experience in that in the election reforms that have happened in, in campaign finance. So there are a number of other pathways.
Can I, can I just weigh in on one thing? We can always deal in the possibilities of, yes, all of the commissioners as, as, you know, as city commissioners, you haven't done it up until this time. And so the idea of like, okay, this doesn't work and you're going to do something different. I think that's just not realistic. And I think one of the things that we have been told time and time again, and by many of you on the city commission, is that you really wanted to put the best thinking in the hands of a commission that is going to spend hours and hours and hours of time working and hearing public testimony and engage in community. And you invested in community engagement. We heard from the communities of Coalition, the Coalition here. I just, I don't know. I think Portlanders are ready for a change and they're ready for some bold action on the part of their city leaders and the public to make a good change. And I just think what we risk by not moving forward is to continue along this dysfunctional path that we have been on. And I don't think everyday people that work every day and take their kids to school and have to pay bills can afford to wait any longer. And I just encourage you as city commissioners, I know you have your various pet peeves on, on what we've put together. But in the big picture, in the grand scheme of things, I think you're going to see we are going to be a better city because of these reforms. And I encourage you personally, as a commissioner who's spent lots of hours away from her family to work on this, I encourage you to support and stand with us. I really do. I don't know if we're allowed to say that, but I'm going to say it because we have you in our, in our eyes right now. This is good work and I really hope you will help our city move forward by lending your support by these reforms.
All right, thank you. That's a great place, I think, for us to draw this to a close. We, we have done a good job of talking this through today. This is obviously not the end of the conversation. This is very much the beginning. The, the charter review commission is referring this to the voters. And there'll be lots of debates and discussion about this in the months ahead. I don't think we're going to solve everything here today, but I really appreciate the work of the commission. I appreciate the work of the city staff that I mentioned earlier that, that worked to facilitate the conversations. I want to thank my colleagues for their excellent comments. Is there anything else anybody would like to say for the good of the order before we adjourn? Not seeing anything. Thank you, everybody. Have a fantastic afternoon on what turned out to be a beautiful day in Portland, Oregon. And we'll see you all soon. You take care. We are adjourned.